Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's bring the Village Board meeting to order. Six oh, six oh five P M., September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Colehead in Colorado?
Doxy.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Batia.
Here.
Washburn.
Here.
Hewitt.
Here.
DeGroot.
He's here. I'd like to take just a quick minute to sadly inform all present that Mary Carrington passed away in the last few days. Mrs. Carrington was a prime force in the, in the village of Mount Pleasant, then the town of Mount Pleasant. Not only she was on the board and past town chairman, she was also involved in the county, on the county board level. Tremendous individual. We recently named a street after her in the past year. And if you could just hold your thoughts just for a minute. Thank you. So first up is a public hearing, actually a series of, of public hearings dealing with various zoning issues. I'm going to read the rules for these public hearings at this time, and these rules apply to all of them. If you wish to speak on any of the public hearing items on our agenda, that's Items A through F, please fill out a comment form, which you can find on the table near the entrance. Once recognized, speakers will come to the podium and identify themselves with their name and address. Speak, please speak clearly into the microphone. When applicable, I'll first call people in favor of the application and then call those who are opposed. And again, as we go through each agenda item, we'll open up that particular item to public comment once we've heard from staff. Speakers must direct all their discussions towards the board. I will not allow interchange between board members of the audience and the petitioner. We request that you do not interfere with nor interject comments while another person has the floor. Please keep all comments on that particular item before the board in no longer than five minutes. Finally, please turn off and mute all electronic devices so we don't have that distraction. So first off, I'll open up a public hearing for Item A, which is Comprehensive Plan Amendment pertaining to Old Green Bay Road. Mr. Schultz?
Mr. President, members of the Village Board, the applicant applied to change the village's part of the land use element of the multi-jurisdictional comprehensive plan for Racine County. Twenty thirty-five, otherwise known as the plan, for two point nine one acres at the corner of Old Green Bay Road, which is County Trunk Highway X, and County Line Road, which is County Trunk Highway K R, from residential areas including churches, multifamily, to mixed residential commercial. The applicant concurrently applied to rezone the property to B two. The applicant believes the parcel's location at the intersection of two County Trunk highways and the shallowness of the property make it unsuited for estate residential development and more suited for neighborhood commercial development. In terms of the questions that we need to review for the comprehensive plan, the village staff believe the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan, including Goal Nine One, promote redevelopment and infill areas with existing infrastructure and services, enhancing existing residential, commercial, and industrial areas. Goal Nine Two, which is promote the coordination between land use and housing design that supports a range of transportation choices. And Goal Nine Three, encourage development patterns that promote efficient, sustainable use of land that can be readily linked by transportation systems and utilize existing public utilities and services. In terms of objectives of the comprehensive plan that this application follows, there would be provide a balanced allocation of space to each of the various land uses in order to meet the social, physical, and economic needs of Racine County and its communities. Promote the development of neighborhoods which contain an appropriate mix of housing with supporting commercial, institutional, and recreational uses. Encourage compact and efficient development patterns within planned urban service areas. Maintain and enhance economic vitality of the county by encouraging a diversified tax base of agricultural, commercial, industrial, and residential uses. The village staff do not believe the amendment will lead to any detrimental environmental effects. The proposed amendment is compatible with the surrounding land uses, particularly the County Trunk highways, for which it is at the corner of two of. It is, the existing local and county facilities and services are adequate to serve the type of proposed development associated with the amendment. The proposed amendment would enhance the economic development within the county. The proposed amendment is in substantial agreement with the recommendations of the regional land use plan. With that, the village staff and the Plan Commission recommend approval of the amendment. The amendment procedures for a comprehensive plan are a little bit extensive. After this, this will be at the Plan Commission in October for review and up for the final Village Board vote towards the end of October. So this is about three months in the making, as our comp plan amendments are. With that, I can answer any technical questions before you get to public hearing.
Are there any quick technical questions from the board?
Not at this time.
Good. Is there, I'll now, at this point, open up to public this particular item. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on this, for or against it? Not seeing any hands waving, not seeing anybody signed up for that particular item. We'll, we'll close Item A then. We'll move on to Item B, which is Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two pertaining to a zoning amendment for fifty-seven twenty-three Durand Avenue.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm going to take the next two in coordination with each other, the fifty-seven twenty-three Durand Ave, because they're essentially a package application.
Along with the conditional use?
Along with the conditional use, yes. The applicant proposed a drive-through car wash and self-service cleaning stations. The parcel currently contains a vacant bank. The applicant plans to demolish the bank for the new project. The applicant requested rezoning the parcel from B two to B three because the B two district prohibits multiple drive-through lanes. They use personal vehicle repair slash maintenance as a conditional use in the B three district, which limits overnight outdoor vehicle storage to a maximum of six vehicles. The Village Board intended this condition to only apply to repair shops, and the village staff do not anticipate much, if any, outdoor vehicle storage for the proposed use. The applicant did not apply for site plan review with these applications. The village staff anticipate the operations of the car wash would largely mirror the rocket wash on Spring Street and the tsunami car wash on Washington Avenue. At the September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting last week, the Plan Commission voted one to four against a motion to approve the applications. Plan Commission in this circumstance is a recommending body to the Village Board. The Plan Commission cited concerns regarding the appropriateness of B three zoning adjacent to the residential properties to the south and to the potential noise issues from the proposed use. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the map amendment and the conditional use comply with the land use element of the comprehensive plan. The village does not have an adopted plan for local planning area eighteen. Property does not contain any existing overlay districts, and the B three district, which is proposed, allows the personal vehicle repair slash maintenance uses via conditional use. In terms of fiscal note, the property currently has an appraised value of just over a million dollars. The rocket wash on Spring and thirty-one has a assessable value of about two point three million dollars and the tsunami car wash at sixty-three fifteen Washington Avenue, sold on April sixth for about three point seven million dollars. Therefore, the village staff would anticipate the redevelopment of the property would raise the assessed value by about two to two and a half million dollars. The property fronts Durand Avenue, which is State Trunk Highway eleven, and the state's responsibility to maintain, which the county helps with. In terms of review and decision-making criteria for conditional use, they're outlined in your packet. But the village staff do not believe the use would endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Staff believe the site is in a dense corridor with ample municipal services and access to those services. The subject property is bordered by residential properties to the south. The tsunami car wash along Washington Avenue received multiple municipal complaints regarding the noise of the blowers and the vacuums. Considering this, the village staff recommended proper screening to the south and a limitation of operating hours on the conditional use. That said, the Plan Commission did not think those conditions were adequate to satisfy the residents' concern regarding noise, thus their recommendation against the project. Staff believe the development would not impede additional development of the area. The preliminary site plan submitted maintains the shared access along the front of the property to the neighboring property. Though I should note, there was testimony at the Plan Commission from some adjacent residents who stated they were concerned with vacant lots to the south that were planned for residential development and how this development would impact the infill of those lots. Staff believe the development would provide, will provide adequate site improvements. Additionally, Condition One requires site plan review by the Plan Commission. Staff believe the triple stack waiting area will allow stacking without impeding traffic on eleven. And staff believe the development conforms to all existing regulations. Therefore, the village staff recommend, and the Plan Commission recommend, against the zoning map amendment for fifty-seven twenty-three Durand Ave and the associated conditional use CU zero-two twenty-two. Finally, I'd like to note that the applicant, after the Plan Commission recommended, when you get to the action items later on in the agenda, that you table it for at least a month so they can try to address some of the neighbor concerns. However, this application was publicly noticed for a public hearing tonight. So after consultation with the village attorney, we decided to move forward with the public hearing portion of these applications. And then it will be up to you to decide later on in the agenda if you'd like to table it. But staff's recommendation would be to give the applicant a chance to try to address some of those concerns and to at least table it for a month to the second meeting in October. With that, I can answer any questions about that, and otherwise, move forward.
Are there any? So at this point, I'll, I'll open this item up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this? I believe that I've got paperwork from Peter Nicolai. Mr. Nicolai here. She's asking where it's located.
It's just east of Green Bay Road on Highway eleven. It's the old North Shore Bank.
The old, the old North Shore Bank property? It's west of where Cardinal Fitness used to be, east of like where Johnson Bank is.
That supply store, right there.
Mr. Nicolai?
Thank you. I'm Peter Nicolai. My five-seven-zero-two Winthrop Avenue. Our current home, where we live now, my wife and I, is Kitty Corner behind this. That would be to the southeast corner. We have two lots there. We also own the two lots directly behind it. And then her mother, Susan Bado, couldn't be here tonight. She owns a lot directly east of it. Our major concerns, we've done a little bit of research looking at other car washes of this nature. Constant complaints about noise is one of them. Dirt, traffic, you name it. When we hear the other time, our, our main concern with this is, is this is an older neighborhood, maybe fifty-plus years. North Shore Bank's been there for thirty-seven years and never had an issue with the other businesses. We have no issue with businesses. This type of business, we believe, will directly impact the value of not only the lots behind it, but our property as well. So we actually have four lots behind the proposed property. I see that one of the first things they say is they're addressing previous, from their experience, complaints of noise, and they're addressing that. So the way I look at this is, before they even start this project, there's already a noise issue with it. And this is an older neighborhood. My wife has been, has lived there all her life, as well as your grandparents, had a business on that property. All the foliage there, the trees, thirty, forty years old, that'll all be taken off, which also helps to deaden the noise around it. And I know recently, when they expanded Highway eleven, they put in sidewalks to make it easier for people going to the bus stops and such. This would increase the traffic on that as well. So we have no objection to businesses being in the neighborhood, but one of this type is just not conducive to a residential neighborhood like we have right now. So we hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like Penny Nicolai wishes to speak too.
Hi, my name is Penny Nicolai, and I live at five-seven-zero-two Winthrop Avenue. Some of the things I'm going to say might repeat a little bit what my husband Peter said, but what I'm going to say tonight may or may not make a difference to you, but it makes all the difference for us. We own the two vacant residential lots behind what is now the North Shore Bank building and the property directly east. And we do live at the fifty-seven oh-two Winthrop Avenue, making the proposed car wash almost in our backyard. The vacant lots we own border the south side of North Shore Bank and face a small neighborhood on a quiet, dead-end street. I have lived in this area my entire life. I'm third generation and grew up in a family business on Durand Avenue. I understand living with and around businesses, but this car wash is different for us. This is a life change for our small, quiet, dead-end street. What I'm opposed to is the twenty-five vacuum stalls facing east in close proximity to our backyard. The loud music from the cars, the garbage, the lights from the parking lot, possible overnight parking, the height of the building, the traffic, the noise, and the current water flow and swale on the south, I'm sorry, on the northwest corner of our property. I could go on and on, but these would be common concerns to anyone living near a business and a car wash, including yourself. Changing the zoning from a B two, intending to accommodate a moderate-intensity neighborhood-scale commercial building to a B three, accommodating to a high-intensity commercial building, just doesn't fit. The multiple lanes requested for the car wash function have the potential for creating problems with a shared driveway to a medical facility and bus stop issues. The revisions mentioned to these plans include walls, enclosures, and landscaping. With all due respect, any amount of landscaping would take fifteen years plus to buffer the screening needed. Walls and enclosures are not proven to help lower the decipal levels of the twenty-five vacuum stalls. The vacant lots we own will be a loss to my family financially. What now would be considered a quiet, dead-end street with the potential to build a new home will now have a car wash in their backyard. We ask for your consideration to make another choice. Think of yourself living by a car wash, or maybe what that might do to the value of the lots in our home. We understand the importance of revenue for Mount Pleasant, and again, we are not opposed to business, but this isn't apples to apples. Please don't put a car wash in my backyard. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on this particular item, the car wash? Not hearing from anybody. We'll close public comment on, on Items B and C, which we took together. So now open up a public hearing on Item D, which is Ordinance twenty-five dash twenty twenty-two pertaining to an amendment of the zoning code for land along Spring Street. Mr. Schultz?
Mr. President, trustees, similar situation for this one. I'd like to take D and E as a package deal because the conditional use is related to the zoning. The applicant proposed splitting the property, which lies at seventy-one thirty Spring Street, into three lots. One's about five point five acres, one's about two point eight acres, and one's about eleven acres. The applicant proposed dedicating about point seven seven acres for public road purposes to extend Timber Lane northwards from Spring Street. Both the applicant and the village staff provided the C S M Racine County for common. In coordination with the T I A, and the county did not object to the location of the public roadway dedication. However, they did limit the access to write-in, write-out only. The applicant also applied to amend the zoning map for the parcel along Spring Street from P one to R H one. The applicant wishes to develop a senior living facility use allowed via conditional use in the R H one district. This application is coordination with conditional use CU twenty-two oh-three. The R H one district allows community living arrangement over sixteen residents via conditional use, which limits the number of residents to the number of bedrooms in the building. Per the applicant's narrative, the proposed one hundred ninety-four-unit contemporary farmhouse senior living facility would include a combination of four-story and two-story elements, all of which do not exceed the sixty-foot maximum height limit in the R H one district. This would also include onsite parking, both subgrade and on-grade, specific dining areas, laundry areas, library, beauty barbersalon, multipurpose theater, fitness center, mail center, outdoor amenities, including courtyard patio seating area. Proposed development would consist of one facility providing a continuum of care. That'd be independent living, assisted living, and memory care. Approximately one hundred ninety-four total units, daily meals, social programs, and activities, customized level of care, campus site improvements with comprehensive stormwater management design, cohesive native landscaping, and exterior amenities, flexible parking arrangements. The facility would be open twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, obviously, for a senior living facility. And the number of employees would be approximately eighty-eight. The application follows the land use element of the comp plan. The village does not have adopted plan for local planning area six. The applicant has subsequently met most of the certified survey map conditions that we have on it, so we'll skip past those for the public hearing purpose. The application meets the design standards and required improvements for the certified survey map. In terms of zoning, the R H one district is primarily intended to accommodate range of residential building types of higher densities. Those should be applied in areas with excellent transportation transit access, including major highway corridors. Again, this is adjacent to Spring Street, which is County Trunk Highway C. The application would have to meet all the others R one, R H one zoning standards. The property does not contain any overlay districts, nor did the applicant propose any as part of the map amendment. The use is allowed via conditional uses, as I already stated, in the R H one district. In terms of site design standards, we made a couple notes regarding the parking and stormwater access for which the applicant has subsequently started to work on already after the Plan Commission, Plan Commission meeting last week. The village also requires a minor update to their lighting plan for color temperature reasons. In terms of fiscal note, the lands contained within the applications do not lie within any tax incremental districts. The applicant requested tax incremental financing assistance for the public improvements portion of the project. However, the village staff do not yet have the completed analysis by the village's financial advisor. Both the Community Development Authority and the Village Board must approve any TIF assistance request with a development agreement. The applicant estimated about twenty-three million dollars worth of assessed value. The village staff estimates the project would use approximately two percent of the taxes it pays over twenty years towards the cost of repaving the adjacent local roadway. This is less than the six point seven the village spent over the previous five-year average towards its paving program, showing the development adequately covers its share of public infrastructure maintenance costs. These estimates include the full cost of Timber Lane extension northwards, and the project still performs well. The future phases on the west side of the roadway or expansions to the building may further decrease the repaving percentage. The project's estimated value per acre is about four point one million dollars per acre, which is above the village's minimum target of about a million dollars per acre. And for additional considerations, due to the existing parking between the potential, potentially in the vegetative buffer setback, the village staff will, would like to work with the applicant on some parking arrangements on the west side of the property. We've gotten some notes from the D N R that what was considered a stream on some of the maps is not actually navigable. So some of those conditions are a little bit unneeded at this point, and that just happened earlier today. In terms of conditions recommended by the village staff, they're in your executive summary. And the village staff and the Plan Commission both recommend the Village Board move to approve the C S M, the ordinance, and the conditional use, subject to the recommended staff conditions.
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here, if you'd like to ask any questions.
Did the applicant wish to add any other thoughts? If so, I'll bring you up to the podium and recognize you. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Alex Ruxford. I'm representing the applicant. I'm located at one thirty-one five zero Larter Town Plank Road in Elm Grove, Wisconsin. Two simple comments I'd like to make here before Mr. President and the village trustees is that we appreciate your consideration for our development, which is, as Sam mentioned, a continuum of care of independent assisted living and memory care within this community. There is a specific need within this county for that type of use, so we're excited to bring that development here before you. Along with me today, I have our co-developer, which is Stu Mills with Heartland America. He has developed senior living communities throughout the country, and we're very excited to partner with him on this opportunity. And I represent Three Leaf Partners, based out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. With that said, the second piece I'd like to just mention, as Sam in his summary outlined, although it's not specifically on the agenda this evening, we are making requests, working with village staff and, of course, the board, to request and create a tax incremental district along with tax incremental financing to support the specific infrastructure needed for this development and future growth within the village. That's specific to the infrastructure on Spring Street, County Highway C, for write-in, write-out access, along with the extension of Timber Lane, which will service this development along with future development to the north. So basically leveraging the tax increment from this development to support future growth in the village, of course, to support our development as well. Thank you.
Any thoughts or questions from the board to either Sam or the developer? Any thoughts or questions from the board to either Sam or the developer? Okay, so I'll open this item up to a public comment. It looks like Travis Yankee wanted to speak to this.
Thank you for your time, Village Board, again. Travis Yankee, 103 Trellis Lane, Mount Pleasant, Wisconsin. I'd just like to remind the board, I'm here, to remind the board and my fellow residents what the TIFs are typically used for when it comes to development in most communities. I'd like to quote line by line the Wisconsin Department of Revenue outlines for how a TIF should be built and used. Important: One key basis for the use of a TIF is the "but-for" requirement. As part of all creation resolutions, a municipality must affirm that the development would not happen but for use of the TIF. The municipality must believe that without the TIF, the development would never happen. This requirement is important to ensure a TIF assists development. Projects needed help, but that is not a gift of tax dollars to a private developer or property owners. Please review considerations through municipality for information. I'd be happy to share this PDF with anyone on the board. I will not go into any more. But again, I just want to reiterate that if you do an easy search of the developers that just spoke, many of the developers that have come to this board previously, and that will be coming soon, I'm pretty sure it was approved in the closed session earlier today, the development agreement with this developers are probably already approved to give them tax dollars to proceed with this. Again, these businesses are very successful, and with the burden this village has already with Foxconn and many other developments coming, any additional cost taxes taken away that the residents have to submit and have to bear the burden of is just unacceptable. Thank you.
Did the Duthys want to speak on this, too? Robert and Nancy? Were you the next item? Mrs. Bertelson, were you speaking on this, or were you going to be speaking on something else? Mrs. Bertelson, yes. Were you going to be speaking on this item or something else? Okay, because we'll get to the other public comment stuff shortly. So nobody else wishing to speak on this, I'll close a public comment on this item. So now I'll move on to item D, actually, oh, F, I'm sorry. F is ordinance 25-2022 pertaining to an amendment of the zoning map along Spring Street. This is different property from the property that was just subject to this previous hearing, and it's across from Racine Bible Church. Sam.
Mr. President, trustees, the applicant applied to amend the zoning map for a parcel along Spring Street from AG2 to RM2. The applicant applied with the permission of the property owner, I94 Associates. The applicant wishes to develop a multi-unit use with up to 20 units per building allowed by right in the RM2 district. The applicant's narrative says they plan to pursue a 320-unit arrangement for the site. The village staff believe the property's proximity to the State Trunk Highway 20 cluster of employment, adjacent existing and planned public roadways, and the nearby interstate system makes moderate-density residential a suitable zoning classification for the property. Property owner requested that the village board authorize the ordinance take effect when the applicant closes on the property. The village staff incorporated this request into the language of the proposed ordinance. The application follows the comp plan. The village does not have an adopted plan for local planning area one. However, the Community Development Department directed a capstone project for UWM's Master Urban Planning Program that started on the local area plan. Staff and the students worked together, and the staff largely supports the findings and suggestions of the plan. However, the village board has not yet officially adopted that plan. ZMA 2210 matches the findings of that plan, which shows two public roadway extensions northwards, which generally comply with the general village spacing guidelines for public roadways. The application meets the RM2 lot size standards. The lands contained within the application do not lie within any tax incremental districts at this time. The applicant indicated they plan to request assistance for the project. However, the village staff did not receive any financial information with this application. Village staff expect that the applicant would submit any request for assistance in coordination with a future site plan application later on. The village assessor estimated the assessed value of each new unit at approximately $150,000 per unit. Therefore, the total assessed value of the project would be approximately $48 million using the proposed 320-unit count, which would give the project a per-acre value of about $1.85 million. Neither the village staff nor the plan commission recommend any further conditions for approval, and the village staff and the plan commission recommend the village board move to approve ordinance 26-2022.
Any questions for Mr. Schultz?
I should say the applicant is also here, if you have any questions for them as well.
Did the applicant wish to add anything? Do you have some?
Just a quick question, Sam. We discussed ordinance 25-2022, that's next to Romo Lodge, so this ordinance 26-2022, ZMA 22-10, where is that on Spring Street?
It's pretty far west, across from Racine Bible Church.
Okay, okay, I get it.
Yeah, basically halfway between V and the front of the road.
I got it. Thank you. I forgot. Thank you.
So I'll open up public hearing on that item pertaining to the property across from Bible Church. Is there anybody wishing to speak on that? I believe I've got the Duthys. I'll take either of you or both.
Members of the board, citizens, good evening. I am Bob Duthy, 9100 Durant Avenue, Sturgis, Wisconsin. We do have some concerns. Basically, because of the many questions we have, the unknowns are what we're pretty much concerned with. So just to recap a little bit, the property in question has been farmed by our family who's been farming for 100 years plus. This is very important land to our family, of course. This is a big undertaking on the part of the zoning. We're not saying no. We just need questions answered. We're looking at the one case of how will this impact our farm operation? I guess is our concern, obviously. That goes without question. What restrictions to our farm will this create in operating our farm? How will this impact taxes? Okay, we need detailed information on how these proposed rezoning plans impact drainage, utilities, sewer water, electric, and I'm sure those are communicative problems also the board, I'm sure, is very interested in. Logistically, roads. We're talking about putting in many warehouses, many, many units of housing, if I read correctly on here, changing the zoning from agricultural 2 to M2. General industrial is a big step right there. I'll wrap these up in the interest of time. The proposed owner wishes to be able to construct either one warehouse of approximately 750,000 square feet, two warehouses of approximately 375,000 square feet each, approximately eight buildings of about 20,000 of each house business to serve a proposed business park adjacent. This is a lot to chew. Regardless of the use, it is expected that ponds for rainwater retention will be created. Wow.
I'm not sure you're speaking to the right item, because this is a residential identity that's going on.
There's two items on here. Yeah, I could have them confused. There's two items on here. Can you give me some help? It's my wife, Nancy.
We received the notice of the meeting and signature of the proposal on Spring Street, but we also received a letter from a lawyer looking for those details. We are to be subject to the same property.
That's many of the questions we have. We'd feel a lot easier if we could just get more information.
Well, you are asking many questions, and we have a committee structure that deals with those questions as they come before us, plan commission, certainly. We have staff that digs into all of that. I can have Sam briefly address the overall concerns that you have, but I don't know if we can go into point-by-point everything that you're bringing up, especially if you're talking about two different developments, but go ahead, Sam.
So just in general, any development would be required to meet our stormwater ordinances to make sure farming operations aren't impacted, they're not, you know, dumping adjacent water onto adjacent properties and things like that. But this specific application is in regards to what I think you received notice on would be the residential one, but I'll happily meet with you after the formal public hearing is done, so I can make sure. I'm not aware of the letter to which you refer from an attorney, but I'll happily talk it through with you.
Well, that's the confusion. So thank you, Sam, and we would ask that this item be tabled right now until we can get more information, since these are huge projects that could have great impact on our farm. And we're certainly not saying no. We just need to have questions answered. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your thoughts.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else wishing to speak on this particular item that hasn't signed in? Not hearing from anybody else, we'll close business, public comment on that item. And there being no other public hearing information before us, we'll close out of public hearing, and we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. So the first item on the agenda that we go to would be public comment and input. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments on any matter. Please listen for the president to recognize you. State your name and address for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes. So I'll go back to Mrs. Bertelson.
I live at 1502 Meadow Lane. My item tonight seems so minimal for what everybody else is bringing up, but it's important to us on our block. I'm here for the Public Works weeds and grass portion of your meeting. It pertains to the field west of our properties on Meadow Lane. My neighbor, Sherry Tylo, at 1458 Meadow Lane, and I called Teresa several times, and we believe she was unaware of the protocol of cutting the field over many years. When she returned our call, she said someone had made the executive decision to cut the perimeter. We just got the same answer from those that were cutting the field. Sherry and I then attended two of the Public Works meetings. The first one on September 12th, where we brought a bouquet of the weeds of 54 inches tall growing in the field to show them what we were putting up with. The second meeting, September 19th, the committee was going to discuss it and come up with different changes, such as cutting of the field or charges to the owner or length of time to cut or pay. We don't know. The majority of the neighbors, we pay very good money to have weed and feed on our properties, but it is futile to do this as the weeds grow and then go to seed. A great deal of the time, and I mean a great deal of the time, we get the west wind that blows directly on our properties with all the seeds and fluff that goes into our air conditioners and plugs up the screenings on all sides. Mount Pleasant does have an ordinance online that states that these weeds are to be cut as often as needed if the weeds grow nine inches or more. Our bouquet was 54 inches. That well exceeds that amount. I have lived at 1502 Meadow Lane since 2003. This is the first time the entire field has not been cut, and we want to know why. Thank you.
Appreciate your thoughts. I believe that we're taking that up further into the meeting.
Kelly Gallagher, 4622 Noelwood Drive. On August 31st, 2022, Mount Pleasant Police responded to an animal attack in my neighborhood, which sent my 78-year-old neighbor to the hospital. Another neighbor who tried to rescue her was also bitten by the same dog. When Officer Casey arrived at the scene, the dog charged at him, and he returned to his vehicle. The dog then resumed attacking the women. Two weeks ago, roughly 80 neighbors appeared before the village board to tell their stories of being menaced and followed by this specific dog and the other two who live at the same address, traveling in a pack in our neighborhood, scaring the hell out of all of us. This was not the first time the police have been called about these dogs. The police have been dispatched many times before they mauled my neighbor, and as recently as Tuesday, were out again in my neighborhood. Since this incident, we make sure that everyone walking in our neighborhood knows about the danger these dogs present. If they should accidentally get out, and they always do, everyone is at risk. That's how we live now, because these dogs remain in their home. How is that possible, you might ask? The reason these dogs have not been impounded is because our village ordinances have failed us. There is virtually no mechanism written into our ordinances to immediately impound or seize any animal that is unlicensed, running at large, or determined to be dangerous. In fact, our ordinance on impounding animals is completely incomprehensible. For example, in order for an animal to be impounded, the impounding officer must see or hear the violation of this section and have in his possession a signed statement of complaining witnesses made under oath alleging the facts regarding the violation and containing an agreement to reimburse the village for any damages it sustains for improper or illegal seizure. Who wrote this? Does it make any sense to you? Two women were mauled. Our neighbors to the east in the city of Racine have a much different ordinance on vicious animals. In Racine, the chief of police has the authority to immediately impound any animals that are unlicensed or running at large. The chief may declare an animal as dangerous, which the animal control officer told me personally, that official determination can happen in as little as an hour's time. In Racine, dangerous animals must be removed from the city within five days, but can also be impounded by the police chief during the investigative and/or appeal process. Mount Pleasant spends 75% of our annual budget on public safety, and my neighbors are afraid to go outside. I am here today on behalf of 60 neighbors who have signed this petition, which states that we request that Chapter 10 of the Village Municipal Code be amended to reflect animal control measures more consistent with those found in Racine. We cannot undo the damage that was created by this one neighbor, who as of today is still advertising the sale of one of her puppies in this unlicensed dog breeding business. We can, however, make sure that if something like this ever happens again in our village, that dangerous animals will be immediately removed. We want a new ordinance, and we want it now. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak publicly on anything? I have nobody else signed up. Anybody else? Not hearing from anybody else, we'll close public comment. And we'll move to consent agenda, trustees.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
I saw your motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Finance, legal, and license discussion, possible action on bond resolution 10-2022 for the village of Mount Pleasant Sewer System Revenue Bonds, Series 2022, Clean Water Fund Loan, the revenue bonds.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve bond resolution 10-2022 approving sewer system revenue bond, Series 2022, Clean Water Fund.
Second.
I hear a motion in a second. Mr. Bond.
We discussed this tonight at Committee of the Hall. This is a bonding that we're working with the state and the Clean Water This is a bonding that we're working with the state in the Clean Water Fund Loan, in the tune of just over $3.6 million. It is for a lift station, as far as the specifics of the project go, we do have Tony here. You know, this is, this is a good program to borrow from, called the Clean Water Fund Loan, and it's good to take advantage of, so that's all I got.
And the board is fully knowledgeable, you know, about the specifics of this, because we had just gone through this at the Committee of the Whole. But are there any other thoughts for either Mr. Bond or...
I don't have any questions, Mr. President. This was discussed also at the Sewer Commission, and it's an add-on to the new lift station that we're, we have built recently under, in TID 5, and it's replacing the KR lift station, which will now still be needed to continue the affluent from a lawn KR that runs into Summers, but it is definitely a smaller station. And so, we've discussed this at the utility meeting and approved it as well.
Yeah, I'm good with that, too. So, on the matter of Resolution 10-2022, roll call, please.
Doxy.
Aye.
Claussen.
Aye.
Batia.
Aye.
Washburn.
Aye.
Hewitt.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye, the motion carries. So, let's go down to Public Works, which is discussion possible action on Ordinance 31-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 78 of the municipal code pertaining to parking cars on certain village roads.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 31-2022, amending Chapter 78 of the municipal code pertaining to parking on certain village roads as presented.
Waiting for a second.
Second.
Sound your motion in a second. Is Mr. Schultz still, did you want to speak to that, Tony?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is, this is an effort to clean up our parking restriction ordinances specifically in the Lake Park neighborhood. And if anybody looked at the map that I put in the packet, there are several areas where there are two, sometimes three, different parking restrictions along the same section of roadway. And, you know, our best guess is a lot of this is tied to when the CNH tractor plant was still up and running down there, and it's hard to tell how these all came about, but essentially, we see them as totally unnecessary. And what we'd like to do is basically make almost this entire area alternate side parking. So, in the end, I think that'll make our plowing operations much better, and we could send out a notice to all the folks down there to say, hey, basically, this is just going to be blanket alternate side parking at night, and I think that'll help them know where they're at and understand, you know, to be on whichever side of the street at night, and that'll just make our operations better in the winter. So, any questions on this?
Are there? No, I think that, I think that the ordinance makes sense. So, in the matter of Ordinance 31-2022, roll call, please.
Doxy.
Aye.
Claussen.
Aye.
Batia.
Aye.
Washburn.
Aye.
Hewitt.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye, motion carries. So, let's move on to Item 2, which is discussion possible action on Ordinance 32-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 38 of the municipal code pertaining to control of weeds and grasses on property.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 32-2-22, amending Chapter 38 of the municipal code pertaining to the control of weeds and grasses on properties.
Second.
Back to Mr. Byer.
Yes. So, what we're doing here, and this, this went to Public Works Committee multiple times, this, this revision is, is an attempt to kind of clarify how we treat the much larger tracts of land in the village, where noxious weeds aren't an issue, but in order to actually mow them, it would be a significant financial hardship to either the owners, or, again, if the village were to get involved, say the owner didn't want to mow these, we have to go in, spend significant time, staff time, to do this with our equipment, and all we can charge back is time and materials. So, these properties can be a big headache, they are located all over the village. So, the way this language is written is to try to address the areas that are adjacent to residential properties. So, it gives the weed commissioner the flexibility to do some sort of mowing, you know, along to create a buffer area next to these residential areas, but it also leaves the rest of that area kind of naturalized, if you will. And again, the key is, as long as noxious weeds aren't involved, which is the crux of this ordinance, it should be acceptable to let those go natural, if you will. So, that's what we're trying to accomplish with this, with this change.
Thoughts, I'll start with Ron.
Hey, Tony, I agree with the intent, obviously. I've been there where, when I used to own a lot, you know, like how often the village had to go on and mow the lawn, but I guess my question is, does this proposed amendment, I don't think it addresses the question that we just heard from a resident about 54 inches of weeds, or is there going to be the next amendment?
Well, again, it's, it's meant to create a buffer area regardless of how tall they are. If, if they're not noxious, I guess it's a different, different animal, and we, what we're trying to do is be able to look at these on a case-by-case basis and say, this is what we deem acceptable for a property owner to do, that's not too financially restrictive, but also provides that buffer on these extremely large tracts of land. It's, it's a significant hardship to be, have to mow those multiple times a year, or for our staff to have to do it and charge it back. It just, it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. So, that's our goal here, is to allow the flexibility for a buffer area where, where appropriate, but also in these other areas that are much farther from an area like this, they could technically go natural, and there, there would be no effort on either the village or the property owner to have to continuously maintain them.
Yeah, as I say, I agree. It's when I read the ordinance, you know, I support that, but after hearing the public comment, I hope that the staff looks at those concerns also in the future.
Well, I think at issue is, you know, are the weeds, you know, in the eye of the beholder, the qualifier is, are those weeds noxious or not?
Mr. President, I have to speak on this?
Sure.
I think the resident kind of described it very clearly, that, that property west of, north of 16th Street and west of Meadow Lane and everything is a very large piece of property, and it was just mowed in a, in a small area around the perimeter and everything then, too. And it did not do anything to satisfy the residents, and the weeds and everything continued to blow around. I got calls from people that I thought maybe more were going to be here tonight, because a lot of it did go into their air conditioning and some other things like that and everything, too. The buffer zone is not big enough on that, I went out and looked at it, it is totally not big enough, it needs to be much larger, or kind of the field has to be completely mowed, and there should be a substantial fine or something to the resident or whoever owns that property to get this taken care of once and forever. I'm not satisfied with this little buffer zone at all, that, that did nothing.
Tony, can you reiterate, what is the buffer zone? How, how wide is the buffer zone?
It's, it's arbitrarily set at 30 feet in here, but it's at the discretion of the weed commissioner, because everything is, is a different situation.
And the property that, the Meadow Lane property that these residents are talking about and John's referring to, was that mowed to that 30-foot buffer?
I believe approximately, yeah.
Okay.
I would question if the, it was actually 30 feet, though. I went out and took a look at it, it was more like maybe 20 feet or so. But the other thing, too, is, is that in the past, this property has been completely mowed, the property owner refuses to do it, and we were fining him or charging him on his tax records, apparently, a very small amount, and it did nothing. That needs to be changed, and we have to get this cleaned up for the people who are here tonight, and the people I've also had telephone calls on.
Does the ordinance give you any discretion in terms of what's being charged?
No. It's essentially, we have to charge back the time and materials, you know, we can't make profit on, you know, what the village does when somebody's not compliant.
Could the rewrite add any more teeth to it?
I believe we could.
Mr. President, it's what I recommended, I mean, what we have on the agenda, I think is, is good to go, but I think we should also look at the next revision, you know, to, to add more teeth and, and to maybe to look at the buffer zone, because obviously residents have concern, and, and we need to address that, so, so we should vote on this, but I think at the same time, look at the next update ASAP, immediately, maybe.
And where was it arbitrarily just made that you're going to do a buffer? Would that ever been taken in previously in cutting the whole field, and all of a sudden there's a buffer? I heard from residents, and they said they called over here, and they said, oh, well, this is a new way we're doing it, or something, whatever the answer was. It was absolutely really bad.
I think that we have a very unique situation here tonight, because, you know, you ladies have come tonight to voice your concerns. This is the first time I'm even hearing that we kind of had a problem. From my experience with these kinds of situations, as Tony said, there's numerous ones all over the village. Some are typically just vacant lots within a subdivision, that an owner buys, doesn't build their house, and for a couple of years, they come and mow it, and then they get tired of it, and the village mows it, and it goes on the tax bill, and it's paid for. It's, it, when you talk about a time and materials, charge for that, even on a small lot, it's not inexpensive. We use big equipment, that's from the time you leave the yard, it's the men, the gas, the whatever. I also know in farm field situations, if you have a crop that you put in, where you put in winter wheat, by July, the wheat comes off, and that farm field sits. They may plow up the stubble, but that farm field sits then for the rest of the year, until it's planted the following spring. And I know that in some municipalities, there are 50-foot buffers for those, because you want to be able to, you know, the farm field's going to go fallow, it's going to have weeds growing in it, it's not going to be replanted depending on the crop, depending on when the crop comes off. I think in this situation, you know, I really feel for the people, John, and, and I, I agree that, you know, the buffer situation, maybe 30 feet isn't enough. I think it's very difficult to control the wind and to control everything that happens. The vehicle we have in place has been to, to assess that property owner, and it's a fairly large parcel. I would think that he would get sick of paying for that, that he would be much more willing to follow the rules. If, if rather than pass a motion, rather than pass an ordinance tonight, that we're already talking about in discussion as being not enough, or potentially not relevant enough, and we're going to amend it again right away, you know, I would certainly be willing to change my motion to lay it over, John, so that there could be more consideration given to the amount of the buffer. We're not in the grass-cutting business, and so, that's a fairly large tract over there, and I'm not sure that we can ever come up with a way of regulating every size parcel that we have. So, but I, again, my thought is, if this isn't quite right, then let's send it back to committee and make it a little bit better, so that we do have some teeth in it, and we do have a bigger and better buffer and comfort area.
This is the first time there had been a buffer. In the past, it's been cut and charged, probably it's not a big enough amount to get the land owner's attention and everything. Only thing that is on this property is a bunch of weeds and other things that blow around, and a big sign that it's for sale. It's, there's nothing growing, there's no hay, there is no other cut crops or anything on it, except a real big mess.
And if I could add, we had a discussion at a staff level, there's a consistency issue across the entire village. We have lots of acreage that is vacant, that's, it looks exactly like this. That's why the Public Works Committee dealt with the ordinance. And Tony, if you'd like to add anything, it's Tony's department that's charged with. I forget who, is it Lindsay who is our, our deputy director, is the weed commissioner, but she acts at the discretion of the Public Works Director. So, it becomes, we've talked about this at a staff level. There could have been a lot of, we could have gone in and done the same thing with the 30 acres, but as a farmer who's in our community understands, there's lots of parcels then that we would be ignoring. So, that's why they came up with the compromise. So, whatever your direction would like, the, it's up to the seven of you to determine where you want us to go, and just give the, the village attorney some direction, and we'll do what you like. But the problem is, there aren't enough staff to police the entire village. We go from the freeway all the way down to the lakefront. That's, that's the issue.
Does Chris have any thoughts? I'll get to you, Andrew, in a minute, but any thoughts from Legal Man?
Well...
No, I, you, you had your chance to speak at public comment, this is a deliberation of the board now, thank you.
Only comment I have is, I would not advise allowing, you know, what's called a friendly amendment to the motion, because that really, under Robert's rules, which is our law by ordinance, is not allowed. We do it sometimes when it's a mistake, and there's no controversy. Here, there is controversy, I've heard Trustee Batia say he would support this and look at another revision down the line, and others saying they don't want it, so I think if we're doing things the right way, you vote on the motion as it, as it was stated. As far as the subject of the actual, you know, matter that we're discussing, I understand why, you know, we don't want to be in the grass-cutting business, because we frankly just don't have the, the resources to cut every lot that's of this size or bigger that lets it go to weed. There are other ways we can try to incentivize the landlord, or de-incentivize the landlord from letting this happen through municipal court, but, you know, clearly, from what I'm hearing, if we've cut this in the past, the whole thing, and assessed them, that is not getting them to change their behavior. And I could understand why. Tony is 100% correct in that the village is not allowed to, you know, start its own landscaping business and charge for profit. We can charge what our cost is, and that's it. So, you know, once you have a certain piece of property that exceeds a certain size, it's probably a great deal for a property owner to let the village do it.
Exactly, exactly. If he were to have to pay to have a...
Andrew, what were you going to say?
All right, so, this came in, into my, in the Public Works Committee, and we wanted to do something to actually make it better for, for them and for others within the village. The, and what we have in here is, they do talk about the destruction of noxious weeds, per state statute. The, I understand what they're going through, because I see it on my own land, that was, I've got areas that were weeds, and we're trying to get rid of those weeds. So, they're dealing with a large area that's just been let to go to weeds, and then it doesn't matter 30 foot or 60 foot, a good wind is going to blow weeds three, four blocks over, or blow the seeds for those weeds three, four blocks over. So, we could take it back to the Public Works and actually add more of a bite to it, I, I do agree to that. So, I think that that would be a good idea. This was my, the first one that ordinance I've done anything with, so I would, I would be willing and... be willing and love to take it back, and actually increase the effectiveness of this.
Mr. President, respectfully, I don't agree, because, like we heard, the village is not in the business of landscaping and mowing the lawn. Fix what we can. There is nothing in this world that wants to fix, it cannot be that we are done. We are not done. It's an ongoing process. And I brought it up, because your concerns are very valid, we want to address them. But if your concern had come to the village board tomorrow, not tonight, there wouldn't be any discussion. We would fix what we have, and then come back, and deal with the next one, because it's not that, once we, we, we fix this, we approve this, that we are done. It's not that we are never going to come back. We should address your concern immediately, but I would say that, let's vote on the ordinance, what we have, on the agenda, on the table, and then we address the concern immediately.
Well, the, uh, the maker of the motion can also withdraw their motion.
No, she can't.
No?
It's now belongs to the board, because it was seconded.
Mr. President...
Do we do that all the time?
Mm-hmm.
In circumstances when it's clear, you know, someone just said the wrong amount in the motion?
Okay.
So, we call that a friendly amendment, it's not really the way you're supposed to do it, but when there's a circumstances like this, we should do it by the book. I'll just say, too, the one thing we could look at here is, is citations through municipal court. You know, maybe if there's enough of them, that would incentivize the property owner, you know, financially, to, to take care of their own property.
Well, that gets back to the noxious weeds.
Right.
Which is in here already.
Which is in here, and other places in the code, where we could use citations.
Okay. But it hasn't been enforced.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We could, we could start looking at that. I don't think, since I've been prosecuting here, I've had a, something that comes before me for noxious weeds. I, don't quote me on that, but I don't recall one. But it's something we could, you know, that could be a tool, potentially, I'd have to sit down with Tony and look at that, um, to use, um, that could work. You just don't know with, with certain owners.
Okay, so the question before us, that we have to vote up or down, is, the motion, as it has been presented, uh, I would ask Andrew, being that you're on that committee, uh, and Tony, is there enough teeth in the ordinance, you know, as it's presented, that if we, you know, we're a little bit more diligent on the enforcement, uh, that we got what we need?
There's enough here of, it's a change, and there's enough of a start, and then we can add to it. How do you feel about that, Tony?
Well, there's always things you can do. I mean, the, yeah, we can, we can certainly give it a shot. There's always something you can do.
The question, too, is, is that how, if this was an ordinance before, how did it get changed, where the field was cut before, and this year, just the path around it was cut?
Well, I think that was at the discretion of Public Works. They didn't wanna cut the whole thing.
Well, it didn't do a good job.
Mr. President, may I? Last comment. I think, the comments, yes, we have to address your concern, but what I want to add is, it's a coincidence that we had a public concern, and we had an item on the agenda on the same night. That's why we are having the discussion. If we didn't have that, we would vote on the motion, on the proposed amendment as it is, and then we would look into that, the concern. It just so happened that, it happened in this, in the same evening, so I would say, move with that, and then immediately, uh, it's not part of the motion, because we cannot do that, but it's my comment that the Public Works should be looking into the, uh, the citizen comment seriously, and to see, how can you put teeth into that? And, and I would also agree that, based on what I heard, whether the buffer is 30 feet, or the 40 feet, or the 50 feet, that's not gonna make it different, because you don't have any control on the winds. So, that's a whole new issue. But again, my point is, it's a coincidence that we are having the discussion, because both happened to be on the same evening.
Well, to, to mix metaphors, um, you can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good.
Correct.
And what we've got in front of us right now is better than a poke in the eye.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Right.
So it's, it's, um, interesting discussion, but, but it's something that I will, uh, that I will vote in favor of. So, uh, that being said, uh, roll call vote.
Doxy.
Aye.
Claussen.
Aye.
Batia.
Aye.
Washburn.
No.
Hewitt.
No.
DeGroot.
Aye, motion carries.
So, uh, this is something that we'll, we'll certainly, uh, take our best shot with, uh, we'll keep it under review, and, uh, it's, it's start. Okay, item, item three, uh, discussion action on ordinance 33-2022, in ordinance to repeal and replace section 82, uh, dash 133, paren B, uh, paren C, of the municipal code relating to an amount of sewer service charges.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 33-2022 to repeal and replace section 82-133, perens B, perens C, of the municipal code relating to the amount of sewer service charges.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Byer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So this is a, uh, approximately $4 per quarter increase to the flat single-family rate. Um, it's gonna go from 136 this year to 140 next year. Um, this increase is supported by the last, uh, sewer rate study done by Allers, which was the end of last year. Um, this is actually slightly less than what was recommended. And the reason we're actually doing this so early, normally we do this in November, it's actually a requirement of our Clean Water Fund loan that we talked about tonight, that the, the DOA and the DNR had to see evidence of us, uh, raising our rates to be able to pay our bills, so to speak.
So, so in the matter of ordinance 30...
One of the, just, I'm sorry, I, I drift, drift, um, Mr. President, one of the things in committee, when we talked about the sewer rate increase, uh, because we did have one, uh, last year as well, uh, stormwater, um, we've compared ourselves to the other communities. And what's inter, and, and we still are very low, in compared to the sewer service rates that other communities charge, many charge around us. Um, and I think one of the things that's very interesting is that, when, when I, when, in, in sitting on this, uh, sewage committee, or on the sewer drainage district, uh, committee, learning how we're charged for our rates, learning how in a dry year, our rates actually go up, because we have charges to us based on a typical amount of flowage. And when we have less rain, then the charge is still there. So it's very interesting. It doesn't always work the way we think it does in, in, in other ways of life. Um, but in any event, um, we did look closely at how that rate compared as well to other communities, and we were still very competitive. Thank you.
Okay, um, so again, regarding, uh, ordinance, uh, 33-2022, roll call, please.
Doxy.
Aye.
Claussen.
Aye.
Batia.
Aye.
Washburn.
Aye.
Hewitt.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye, motion carries. Let's move on to item number four, which is, uh, discussion action on the inter, intergovernmental agreements with the city of Racine for joint road resurfacing. There's a couple, uh, different projects here. Eaton Lane, uh, Rapids to Romayne, uh, Eaton Lane, Romayne to Terminus, uh, Winthrop Avenue, Carpenter to Gates.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve intergovernmental agreements with the city of Racine for a ver, for various joint road resurfacing projects as presented.
Second.
Hear motion and a second. Back to Mr. Byer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So these are, uh, three roads that we've been, uh, in talks with the city Racine engineering staff for a couple of years now. As you can probably imagine, we, we are split down the centerline of the road, between Racine and Mount Pleasant here, so, um, there's one section of Eaton and Winthrop that are, um, 50/50, split right down the middle, and then there's a smaller share for us on the other side, or on the other, um, Eaton Lane project, that's, uh, reflected in here. But, uh, Chris has gone through these, um, made some changes, the city accepted those, so I think we're in good shape here, and most of this is pretty, pretty boilerplate. These are things we do almost every year with the city, as far as these, uh, these agreements, so.
Are any of these, those situations where it's curb and guttered on one side, and not on the other?
No, these are all urban sections, curb and gutter on both sides.
'Cause that's always really goofy.
Yeah, yep.
Any other thoughts? So this is about Racine saying, we'll do our part, and we do our part, uh, in Mount Pleasant, and is, Racine is the, uh, fiscal agent for this? City?
They'll be the lead, yes.
Okay.
And we will, we will reimburse them.
Okay. So, uh, so in the matter of the intergovernmental agreements, roll call, please.
Doxy.
Aye.
Claussen.
Aye.
Batia.
Aye.
Washburn.
Aye.
Hewitt.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, so, uh, based on, uh, uh, on our attorney, uh, it appears as though we're pulling items number one and two under plan commission, the, uh, 5723, Duran, uh, car wash.
This was a subject of the public hearing, and, uh, Mr. Schultz gave a talk about it, and said that, and we heard concerns from neighbors, and, uh, apparently the applicant is asking to table this to a future date, so, I mean, it's up to the board. The board could make a motion, someone could move to table one and two, under G, to a future date. Um, it's up to the board what you wanna do with these. But that's what the applicant is asking for, and I believe, listening to Sam, that's what, um, he was recommending.
Does it have to be date-specific?
No, I would just say a future date. Sam said, second meeting in October, but I think the smart way to do it is a future date.
I'll entertain that motion.
Mr. President, can I make a comment?
Sure.
On the proposal, as much I see, merit to table this, I think the bottom-line issue is, as we discussed in the planning commission, is this a good location for the business or not? Because my point is, if you table it, what additional information we are looking for? So that's where my concern is, are we delaying it, not knowing, are we going to get any more data, or any more information that will help us to decide one way or the other, or is this, you know?
I believe the staff recommendation was to table it.
Again, I'm not opposed to that, I'm just questioning, what's the outcome? What is expected of that?
Uh, the applicant indicated that they believe their vacuum setup is substantially different from the other car washes in the village, and would make a noticeable decrease in the amount of noise. Um, that's me paraphrasing the applicant. I don't know whether that's true or not, so...
Okay.
My recommendation would be to table it, to see if, if they can prove that. I think that would have substantial, um, change, uh, to the application, um, but it's up to them to provide that proof, ultimately, if you choose to table it.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Hey, I, just on this, I think that we all should go over by the rocket wash, and, um, maybe go the block behind it, and, um, sit and listen, and what you hear. And would you want that in your backyard as well? So before we make a decision on this, 'cause I think that can be a lot of noise, and I wouldn't, I really would consider that a disservice to allow back, to go in with the neighborhood right behind there. I think, before we do that, we should all stop and listen to what it sounds like to be in the neighborhood behind the rocket wash, over in, um, over off of, um, Spring.
It, it is, Mr. President, if I could note, uh, important to note, that per, uh, chapter 90 of the Code of Ordinances, you straight-up deny the rezone tonight, uh, the applicant, um, or the property owner could not come back and request a B3 zone for a calendar year. Um, so, straight-up denial would turn off the B3 request for a full year, so.
So, hearing that, something to think about here is, perhaps, the applicant could withdraw this, in, over the...
Yeah.
...next month or so, because maybe they're saying, I'm just totally speculating here, okay, I don't have any knowledge of this, but the applicant might say, okay, plan commission doesn't like this, village board, if they're listening, you know, might not be thrilled, neighbors are complaining, it might be in their best interest to withdraw this, but leave the ability for them to make a new application to B3 for some other use. Um, so, that would be a, an argument in favor, I think, of tabling this, 'cause if you would just say, let's take this up and vote no, um, now that kinda is off the, off the table, to use that word again, um, for a year.
I can say, from a staff perspective, we certainly heard the plan commission's, uh, opinions on the matter, and I think I understand the village board's tentative concern regarding the proposal on the matter, so unless they can bring something within, you know, the next allotment of time, month or so, um, we know that it's gonna have to be really, uh, solid for you to kind of believe it, so. We, we could certainly, not that, we would tell them to remove their application, or try to speak for the board, but we can certainly guide them to that respect, um, between now and then.
Well, yeah, wait and see isn't, uh, isn't hurting us tonight.
Mr. President, based on the fact that the developer has requested that the item be withdrawn, or laid over tonight, I'm going to make a motion that we table the plan commission items, one, uh, item number G1 and 2, to a later date.
Second.
Hear motion and a second. Any further discussion?
For purposes of discussion, if the developer is looking for a polling of the board, um, I'm in, I, I, having heard the, not heard it at the plan commission, but heard tonight the presentation, I think that it's fair to let the developer know, that the, that at least for my position, um, I'm not gonna be really looking favorably at this. When you look at comparing it to Rocket Wash, uh, the two locations that Wilcom's building, that they have currently, and are building, both of those, the vacuums face County Trunk Highway 20. So you have the effect of that noise being diffused over already a, a, a state trunk highway that, or Spring Street, in the one location, and Highway 20, in the new location. Um, the same with the tsunami. They are right up against, um, Highway 20, they do have neighbors around them, um, and that was kind of dovetailed into a, a similar residential surrounded neighborhood, but the tsunami has more land. Here, you know, the North Shore building is quite a bit, it's very contained and so forth. So, um, you know, I'll make a motion, as I did, to, uh, support laying it over, um, but I certainly think they should give it some careful consideration.
Is there a second?
There is one already.
I did already. I second.
Okay.
I think I'd like to make a, one last comment. I will support that, only because I think it's not the noise issue, because the noise issue, it's probably more nice for the traffic, but I think the bottom-line issue is, we said it in a different way, it is a good fit to have a car wash in your backyard, so, but for that reason, but allowing to table, it gives the developer an opportunity to reconsider the proposal, and for that reason, I'm gonna support that.
Okay, uh, so, uh, the motion is to table, um, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
So that motion carries, that, uh, that item is tabled into the future. So let's move on to, uh, H, uh, discussion possible action on the McGrath Study, Resolution Niner dash 2022.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Resolution 09-2022, adopting the current McGrath Study, effective January 1, 2023.
Second.
Hear a motion and a second. Uh, this is, uh, an item that's been taken up at the last, uh, couple of, uh...
Let's call.
Pardon me? Pardon me?
Mary, yes.
Right, at the last couple of committee of the halls and I know that Ms. Cole wants to speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, earlier this year, the village board approved a contract with McGrath Human Resources Group to conduct a classification and compensation plan revision along with an employee benefits study to ensure the village is offering compensation and benefit packages in line with the current market and peer communities. As President DeGroot mentioned, the last two meetings were spent reviewing the findings. A resolution is before you this evening for your consideration and possible approval. Thanks.
Any thoughts or comments, questions for Ms. Cole?
Mr. President, I don't necessarily have any questions anymore for Ms. Cole. This was a very, very, very detailed report and the purpose of the report was for us as the second largest village in the state of Wisconsin, to really make sure in these times of difficult hiring and finding quality candidates, that we made ourselves as best we could, based on the tools that we have available to us for offering compensation benefits and so forth, that we, that we presented ourselves in a manner that made us attractive and a, a solid place for employees to come and work and, and start a career here. And during that process, I heard a couple of our employees state that they wanted to be here for the next twenty-five years. They wanted to make the village of Mount Pleasant their workplace home for the next twenty-five years. In today's world, you don't hear that very often. You hear people saying, well, I'm gonna be here a couple of years and then I'm gonna jump around. That's what I'm used to hearing in young people. So I'm very proud of us for taking the step. It was a big report. Mary, you did a great job of answering all of our questions individually and as a group. McGrath did a wonderful job as well. The, the report is very detailed. It's, you know, it's very detailed and, and inches thick. So I feel much better now as a trustee, knowing how we need to treat our employees, knowing what's important to our employees, working here in the, in the public sector as opposed to private. And I just want to thank you. So thank you very much. I support it completely.
Echo your thoughts. Mary?
Yeah, it's delightful to have a new employee and new director that's doing such a great job, isn't it? I think we all agree. Not only did our new HR director bring this to you twice, but she's met with all of the department heads, so, and also the Public Works and Utilities employees to make sure that they understood what was in this plan as well. So everybody that's covered has heard about it in addition to you, so thank you very much. It's looking like we're gonna get a positive vote on this, so I shouldn't jump the gun a little bit, but thank you all for your support of this as well.
So regarding a resolution niner dash twenty-two, roll call please.
Doxy.
Aye.
Claussen.
Aye.
Batia.
Aye.
Washburn.
Aye.
Hewitt.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye, motion carries. Let's jump down to reports, Tourism Commission, Trustee Claussen.
Yes, according to our tourism director, we have several things to announce that were just completed. We did all-in volleyball, which was the last tournament of the year. She also promoted Party on the Pavement and put in a lot of articles into the various newspapers in the area. Coming up, we have Top Cheddar Lacrosse Tournament. Boy, that sounds wonderful. October sixteenth and seventeenth there. And you heard previously, we are going to have Quilts on Barns. That will be October ninth. The Racine Zoo, the Jack-o'-lantern Knights were participating and supporting them. And downtown Racine Corp has Wine Walks, which we are supporting as well. And there's a little drop in activity as the temperature drops, but there's still a bit of fun to be had.
So when a temperature drops, there'll be a lot of people whining?
Yes. Oh, oh, oh.
Item number seven, announcements, recognition of village residents, employees, memorials and non-political community events. Anybody have anything for the good of the cause?
Not at this time.
Not hearing anything, one last motion.
Go for German.
Second.
Hear motion and a second. All in favor, signify.